It is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call the Anacortes City Council meeting to order for July 27th, 2020. Ms. Hunt, would you take the roll?
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, tonight, we're going to move on to Item 2A. And this is where I'm going to ask the council for confirmation of the new library director. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about who I'm asking you for confirmation. And then, um, we'll hear from you and hopefully we'll take a vote. So, this evening, I'm asking for your confirmation of my appointment of Jeff Vogel as the city of Anacortes's public library director. Mr. Vogel has been serving as interim director since the beginning of April 2020, um, near the onset of COVID-19 pandemic. He recently met with myself and others in city leadership, including representatives of your personnel committee and, uh, members of the library board to assess his suitability for the library director appointment. And it was unanimous in that, uh, interview process that they would like to move, um, this forward to you for your consideration. Mr. Vogel has been with the Anacortes Public Library for 2007, where he gained experience in several roles, including circulation, technical services, librarian, and most, uh, recently interim director, giving them a more comprehensive institutional knowledge of the, uh, library operations and their personnel. And both front of the house and the back of the house, um, is really important. The, you know, the parts the customer sees and then the internal working of the library. As a librarian, his focus has been on technology, collection, development, library management, and library's meaningful role as a community gathering place. Mr. Vogel attended Western Washington University, where he studied humanities and creative writing. He earned his Master of Libraries and Information Service Science from San Jose State University. And he brings over nineteen years of management experience to this position. As director, Mr. Vogel will be responsible for leading the operations of the Anacortes Public Library, including the budget, staff oversight, and serving the library board of trustees. With Mr. Vogel taking on this role, the library will have an unfilled librarian position for at least the duration of this hiring freeze currently in effect per Resolution 2082 and extended per Resolution 2085. If confirmed, his appointment will become effective August 1st, 2020. I thank you for your time and for your consideration of Mr. Vogel's appointment. For council, it's up to you now.
Mayor Gere.
Yes. Mr. Walters.
I move that we approve, that we confirm, uh, the appointment of Mr. Vogel as library director.
Thank you.
That Mr. Walter and then Mr. Miller. Okay, this, we have, um, a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by, um, excuse me, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion? All in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Vogel. If you were in City Hall right now, we'd give you a standing ovation. Would you like to, um, say anything to the council at this time?
Just, just a big thank you, um, for the confirmation. And I really look forward to working with you all. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. So, the next item this evening is, uh, my weekly update on the COVID-19. As of last week, Island Hospital had tested 2,897 people with a positive cases of forty-six in our community and eight people that have been hospitalized in Anacortes. And we have seen no deaths. We did have an increase in, uh, four cases just in one, the last week and twelve over the last month. So, there, even though our numbers are low, there was a slight uptick in COVID cases here in Anacortes. In the county, as of this afternoon, uh, we, the county has four hu, excuse me, 742 positive cases. We've hospitalized seventy-six. We've had eighteen deaths. And 506 people have recovered. Uh, last week, I had the, um, distinct pleasure of going with the other mayors and, uh, county commissioner over to the test site at Scaggiavelli College. And it is quite the operation. It's set up by, it's like an instant at command, like any kind of disaster or big function. And they, it's, it's manned by about fifty volunteers, many of them that have been there since day one. So, we thank them from our communities for their service to our community. Uh, it's a very thorough process. Um, you don't have to leave your car. Um, it is, uh, it's the type of process where they just swab your nose. They don't do anything really invasive. So, I guess as tests go for COVID, it's one of the nicer tests to get. Um, and I asked them, "How long do you plan on being here and doing this?" And they said, "Well, we're planning on the end, till the end of the year for sure in this setup with this group." Um, and then we'd like to turn it into a vaccination site. So, as soon as we have a vaccine, they want to use the same setup. You can, you know, go over with your family, go through the site, register, go through the tent, and, um, there's all, all medical professionals are doing the testing. Uh, and a medical professional there can give you a vaccine. So, I really like their, you know, going from a pandemic to recovery in their thinking. So, it, it really, um, made me feel really proud of our community and gave me hope for where we're going. Um, the county still is, right now, the county is standing at ninety point six cases for a hundred thousand people. And to move to the next phase, we need to go back to twenty-five. So, we have a ways to go. The county must have, um, greater than fifty individuals tested per new case during the prior week. And tw, currently, we're at twenty-four tests per, for each new case. And the percentage of individuals testing positive must be less than two percent. And we're currently at one, four point one percent. The percentage of beds occupied in the county must be less than eighty percent. And we're currently at seventy-six point seven percent. And lastly, the percentage of beds occupied by COVID-19 cases must be less than ten percent. And we're currently at four point two percent. So, we're meeting two of the five criterias to move to the next phase. Um, so, we still have a ways to go. And as many of you may know, the governor came out with, um, even stricter guidelines that go in effect on August 6th. And at my community briefing on Wednesday, I will break down what those mean, uh, for our community. But a couple of the highlights that stood out for me was at this time, um, uh, we were, once we got to Phase Three, we were supposed to be able to go from a group of five individuals in a restaurant or any social situation to ten. The governor's going to keep it at five, like if you're in a restaurant and you, they should be five in your own family. So, really pulling us back in and keeping us safe. Um, we will be allowed to have weddings and funerals after August, from August 6th, but no reception. And caterers, it's actually written out in the, um, notice that caterers are prohibited, prohibited from providing food for events. So, they really don't want us hanging out and having a good time. But I understand that. If you eat and drink, it's not a good mix with COVID. So, those are just some of the restrictions that are coming our way. Um, we will, uh, continue to, um, inform people and get them the correct information. I hear daily from folks in the community, in fact, twice a day, from people wanting more signage in our parks and our forest lands, reminding people to wear masks when they're closer than six feet away. So, um, apparently, that's still going on. You know, you can't exercise without a mask. You can be outside without a mask. But if you get closer than six feet, you have to mask up. So, just a gentle reminder. So, that's my COVID report for this week. And any questions? All right. We'll move on then to Item 2C, which is our finance committee update.
Mayor Gere.
Yes.
Going through the, uh, supporting documents for the finance update, uh, Item 4A. And I think that, uh, will cover most of what we talked about last week.
Okay. So, we'll get to that when we get to it. All right. Anything else for the finance committee? All right. We'll move on then to Item 2D, the personnel committee. Ms. Cleland.
Uh, Mayor Gere. Yeah. So, we had a very full personnel committee with, uh, council member McDougall and council member Young, uh, present and, uh, Mayor Gere also. Um, so, we have some really sad news that most of you have already heard. Um, our HR director, Vanessa, is leaving to, um, find another job closer to her family. We're sorry to see her go, but she is making every effort to set the city up, um, for a smooth transition. So, we had a pretty in-depth, hour-and-a-half-long meeting, kind of going over all the major elements, um, about personality policy updates, um, and kind of the collective bargaining and paid family leave. Um, there are some various, um, uh, contracts that will be up at the end of the year. And she's making, working with the various unions to try to figure out a way to maybe do an extension through 2021 because of the COVID issues, um, and because she's leaving and, and that position won't necessarily be, be filled immediately. Um, and so, that's really good because she worked very hard during her short, brief time here to develop really trusting, um, well-running, uh, relationships with the various unions and also just the various, um, employees that we have. Because we've got a pretty big group of people here. And, um, so, uh, she's kind of getting that set up so we can transition as smoothly as possible. Uh, firefighters are one of those, one of those unions that, um, may look at an extension. And we had both Chief Oliveri there and then also the union reps for, um, Chris Byer was there. So, that was cool to talk to them. Um, the, there, we also got to meet Jeff Vogel, who we all saw earlier this evening, um, and talked to him a little bit about the library appointment. So, that was addressed today already. Um, and then she also explained to us the HR director transition. She's gonna, Cara Turner from Turner HR has been, done some small projects with us, um, in the past. And so, she is going to kind of be our consult person, um, during this transition time. Um, and we're going to probably post an HR position in August 14th for two weeks. Um, and then hopefully find someone. Shh. Sorry. This is, uh, an example of COVID times when the kids are at home.
Oh, go ahead.
Because they can't go anywhere. So, I apologize. Um, and so, the last thing, um, for HR relations, um, Steve Hoglen is going to kind of take over that element temporarily. And then for the COVID-19 issues for the city, Alexander Holden is going to handle that for us temporarily. And then finally, just some staffing observations. There are some departments that are, that are lacking. As we've grown as a city, there are some areas that she really felt we should know about, um, moving forward. So, kind of maybe HR and IT. And I think we'll probably discuss this further, um, at our meeting later this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay. Finally, then, the planning committee report.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Just before this meeting, um, Commissioner Cleland McGrath, Mr. Walters, and I met with staff, um, Mr. Meesmer, the planning director, and Ms. Grage as well. And we had a great conversation about a number of subjects. The first being rental assistance availability for our community. We have $26,000 left in CDBG funding that we could potentially use to provide rental assistance for some of our struggling families in our community. What that would require is an amendment to our CDBG action plan and an inter-local agreement with the Anacortes Housing Authority and/or the Anacortes Family Center, because they already administer those types of grants. So, staff will be working on that and bringing those back to council to consider. We talked about the critical areas ordinance, which we've all been waiting to come to us for quite a while now. And now that it has been reviewed by the planning commission, they have made their recommendations. So, staff will bring it to council on August 10th, August 17th, and August 24th, where they will present the current drafts with the planning commission recommendations. We will talk about that as a council. And we, the staff will develop a third draft, which will then be presented for open formal public comment. So, that will be a period of work throughout August and September with the hopes of an October adoption. So, we'll all feel really good about getting to work on that and moving forward. So, that was exciting. Currently, also, the planning commission is working on the Shoreline Master Program update. And timing-wise, the critical areas ordinance will be adopted before the Shoreline Master Program comes before council. There will be public hearings. And there is also going to be a joint review and comment period with the Department of Ecology as the Shoreline Master Program is, is worked on before it comes to council. And they are sort of the governing body. They need to, Ecology needs to approve our Shoreline Master Program. So, we want to make sure that we have what they need before we consider it and then ultimately adopt it. And it's going to be broken up into three sections. We talked about property on West Fifth Street that the city owns. And the planning department staff have been in conversations with the Parks Department and the Finance Department about potentially using that land for affordable housing development for, um, our citizens with long-term lease arrangement with Habitat for Humanity. And these are the beginnings of these conversations. Um, there's a lot to it. Um, currently Habitat is going to work on a proposal to bring to staff and the planning committee, which we'll look at and then to see where that goes. And then ultimately, if we move forward with it, bring it to council. But that's the beginning of the conversation. And how much, how many places could we fit on that property potentially for units of housing? Um, so, again, very beginning of the conversation, so you'll hear more about that later. Um, former council member Eric Johnson has been talking about, um, sho, homeless shelters for a long time. And he is exploring opportunities for tiny homes to be placed on property belonging to religious institutions, because that is allowed by House Bill 1754, which has tons of requirements. Um, and again, these are also beginning, um, conversations toward this end. So, he's, he's working on that. But the code, state code does not prohibit tiny homes on church properties. So, he's exploring that idea. Um, an update on the small business development grants. Some of the applications have been funded and others are still in process so that the applicants are ensuring their compliance with those Housing and Urban Development regulations, um, mostly to do with income qualification. So, some of those are still in process. We, the city has distributed so far $74,000 to our local small businesses out of $136,000 possible. Um, and then, there's been a donation of $100,000 for more loans or grants. And that's coming from the Scagit Community Foundation. So, in the first week of August, staff will bring a request to council to accept this $100,000 donation for more small business development grants. And these grants will not be subject to the same onerous regulations that the HUD money was. So, that will be good news for people who do not qualify under those circumstances, under those requirements. We, moving on, we have been short a senior planner for several months now. So, staff, mainly Libby and Dawn, are working really hard with the amount of permits that we have in the pipeline right now between type four permits, type three permits, CPAs, comp plan amendments. There's a ton going on and they're doing a really good job at, at keeping that all moving forward. But basically, with our permit numbers, they're holding steady over 2019. So, that's good news for, for, for all of us. Lastly, we wanted to talk about the retail and restaurant expansion into Commercial Avenue. Uh, we're waiting for the Parklets, which we expect to be here also the first week of August, finally. That will be great. There are also the A-boards coming, uh, that staff has ordered. And they will talk about social distancing. And there are, staff's going to put some stickers and things downtown to show where people can stand safely from each other, just as little reminders. And that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I wanted to add to the critical area, um, when the ordinance comes to City Council starting August 10th. The staff, Marcia, is working with IT. And we will have a public platform at that point that they all can attend like we attend. So, they've, they've, it's been a really busy summer in IT. And they've got it in the, the queue now and it will happen by August 10th with, um, our first public kind of hearing or meeting over the critical areas. Okay.
Mayor Gere.
Yes. Well, feel awesome.
To tag on a bit to what Ms. Moulton mentioned, uh, the committee was supportive of planning, hiring a person to replace the planner's position that is currently vacant. Um, that is not possible under the hiring freeze that we've adopted without the mayor certifying that that position is essential. Um, but the committee is supportive of that certification. Um, I also wanted to mention, on the critical areas ordinance, there was quite a bit of, um, misunderstanding or, um, confusion about how it is the planning department was running the critical areas ordinance process as it made its way through the planning commission. And people advocating for another draft of the proposal prior to it getting to City Council. So, um, the planning department was moving the process consistent with code through the planning commission and then taking the planning commission's recommendation and sending it to the city council. They were not producing extra drafts that were inconsistent with the original proposal or, um, that were anticipating what the planning commission was going to recommend. They were waiting for the planning commission's recommendation. So, now, once it's in front of City Council, City Council will need to decide what it wants to do with the planning commission's recommendation. And then staff will produce a new draft for public comment after that. So, um, as we've talked about multiple times in the planning committee, we won't be soliciting public comment on the draft until there is a new draft. Um, which is not to say we'll prohibit public comment, but we won't be asking for it on anything in particular until there's a document for them to comment on. So, I hope that we are all on the same page with being very consistent in the messaging. Hold up. Let City Council review the recommendation and then we'll go out for a whole nother round of public comment.
Any other comments on that? Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Walters. Okay. At this time, then, we'll move on to our consent agenda, Item 3A through C.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
Uh, I move we approve, uh, Items A through C on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Miss, and then a second by Mr. McDougall. So, we have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. McDougall to approve the consent agenda, Items A through C, 3A through C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. At this time, we're going to move on to Item 4 under Other Business, 4A. Um, this is open for public, public comment. Um, this is our monthly finance update and COVID-19 impacts. Mr. Hoglen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, put together my complement of standard, standard slides, uh, that we generally go through. Uh, so, can you see this? Can you see the bar chart? Anyone?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So, this is the, uh, look at our total tax, um, total tax picture. So, each one of these bars is, the blue bars represent budget, orange is what we've received year-to-date. Um, and we are right on, so this is through June month-end. And we're right at fifty percent collection, um, through June, which is where we would expect to be. I will point out one thing on sales tax. The sales tax line is actually through July. Uh, we get July, or we get sales tax information sooner than we get property tax and utility tax. And so, we do have July data that I plugged in here. So, it's a little bit misleading. The sales tax is through July. And also, the, um, lodging tax is through July. So, we are pretty much where we want to be. Um, in sales tax, we're at fifty percent collection. And this, again, is through July. Through July, last year, we were at fifty-five percent collection, so about five percent off, which is pretty good considering, uh, the last few months in the stay-at-home order. Lodging tax is way down. And we'll talk about each of those, uh, a little, a little more in detail. Um, so, sales tax, um, the blue line and the blue bars are our budget by month. Red is the actual receipts. So, through July, we had been anticipating collecting 2.6 million. We've collected 2.48. So, we're off about 176,000, uh, just under seven percent off of budget. Um, this, what I have boxed here, July expectation, we were budgeting to collect 415,303 in July. Um, our actual collection down in this line was 391,000. So, about 5.8, six, just under six percent off of what we were expecting. So, uh, remember that sales tax collection is two months after the sale is made. So, July receipts represent sales that were made in May. So, those three months that the stay-at-home order has been in effect, March, April, May, with the collection of May, June, July. Um, down here is the representation of what we've actually collected those three months. And then the line below it is last year's collection. We were anticipating our sales tax being a little lower than last year. But for comparison purposes, we were down twenty percent in May collections, which was March sales, twenty-five percent in June, and ten percent in July. And you may remember in, um, I think it was in April, the state gave businesses, uh, the option to defer their sales tax transmission to the state till, uh, to July. So, I think that's why, um, our, our May and June collections were down somewhat more and then July not as much. I think some of those, uh, sales tax, um, through the middle to the state were deferred. So, uh, overall, down 176,000, six point seven percent year-to-date. Uh, not too bad considering the, uh, the stay-at-home order that's been in effect since March, since March 16th. Um, the sales tax, again, same data, just in a different chart, a line chart. This, um, dark blue line is 2020. You can see how it was tracking along, uh, right there where, consistent with prior years and in the last couple of months, has dropped off a little bit. Utility tax, one of our other really large significant, um, oh, rats. Sorry about that. I closed that file down altogether. I thought I was just getting rid of the little window that was, that was obstructing the bottom of the screen there. Uh, the utility tax, this comes back up, you'll see. Uh, the chart I'm showing is utility tax in total. It's made up of two parts. We have private utility tax and public utility tax. And what that is, is utility tax charged on private utilities such as, um, natural gas, uh, electricity, um, cable TV. And then, um, the public utility tax is on public utilities, uh, that the city has, the water sewer, solid waste, storm drain. Uh, and this chart is the combination of those two. And you can see the red bar here is actual, so our actual receipts have actually exceeded what we have budgeted. We budgeted pretty conservatively. We knew that, we could see historically that our private utility tax collection had been dropping off. And so, we accounted for that in our budgeting. And, um, private, or public utility tax, particularly in the, um, in the solid waste utility, has been up a little bit, higher consumption in some of those utilities this year. And with increased utility rates in some of our utilities, that's generated additional utility tax for the city. So we're currently at actually 10% above budget and 0.8% over what we had collected last year. This is through June. In utility tax, just in a different format, line chart. This is looking at building permit activities. So historically, 2013 through 2020, this is through June. So 54,137 dollars collected in building permit fees in June of this year. So year to date through June 2020, we've collected 323,000. This line down, I'm sorry, it says May, that's actually through June. So this is looking at the first six months of each year, just for comparative purposes. So we've collected 323,000 through June of 2020. Through June of 2019, it was only 245,000, 286,000. So our permit activity has been, has been really still very active this year. And you can see the number of permits is in the bold number, the bold font here. So we've, through June, have issued 32 single-family residence building permits. All of last year in 2019 was 52. So we're far outpacing that, that pace from last year. Impact fees, this is a weird line charges. I wanted to show you the, the numbers here. So this is the total of impact fees that we've collected for the year. So 101,000 so far year to date through the three areas that we collect impact fees, streets, parks, and fire. Our street cash, street impact fee cash balance right now is 373,000. We've budgeted to use 575,000 and we've spent so far 474,000 this year. So this 373,000 is after the 474 has been spent. So this 373 in streets is available for use. In parks, there's 343, 340,000 in impact fee cash. We're budgeting to use 200,000 this year and that's all for the cemetery project. Real estate excise tax, and this is one of those revenue streams that goes through the county. So if you look at the collection from June of this year of 110,000, this would be from May activity. And then likewise, the May collection of 68,000 is from April activity. So, sorry, again, I need to update this. I apologize. It says the change from 18 to 19. It's the change from 19 to 20. So we're down a little bit the last two months, you know, for obvious reasons, but not down as, as significantly as I was expecting. So real estate excise tax collection and that's, and that's from existing homes that are sold on the, on the, the real estate market is what generates that REIT. It's still very strong so far this year, 583,000 through June. Down here is the cash balance for REIT. There's REIT one and REIT two. There's two quarter percent. That's what the REIT one and REIT two represent. They're both very similar in their use. REIT two has a little more restriction than REIT one in its use. But combined, as of June month end, there's 3.8 million in REIT cash available for use. We've budgeted for 2020 1.3 million. So, and then, you know, so far year to date, bringing in almost 600,000. So by, by year end, we'll still have a healthy rebalance of probably around $3 million. Lodging taxes is another one we get early notice of. So in July, and this is, again, goes through the state. So it's two months after the, after the fact. So the, the tax that we collect in Ju- July is from hotel stays in May and this is, you know, within city limits. But you can see how significantly those last three months have been down, 71%, 87% and 76% decreases compared to the same month last year. This is the look at all of our funds. We look at this every, every month. There's not anything unusual here. I'll go through it real, real quickly. But the way it's laid out is this column on the left is the, the budget and the top number is revenue, bottom number is expenditures. So budgeted revenues, budgeted expenditures. And on the right column, actual revenues and actual expenditures. And then we just sum up here what year to date, how revenues are stacking up against expenditures. So, and I will point out that we do have second half, or I'm sorry, first half property tax receipts booked into real. So those are represented here. So some of the funds like parks, cemetery, library, they're all at around 50, 55% of their revenue collection and that's for the year. So that's against the entire budget. And that's, those funds are all very reliant on property tax. And with that first half, the months or the, the year to date stacks up pretty, pretty evenly against what you would expect this time of year. Street construction, our revenues are at 78%. That was the Oak Avenue Roundabout. That was a big, there was a big grant helping to fund that as well as impact fees. And so that's why that is as high as it is. We've already booked the impact fees and the grant revenues. There won't be a lot more activity in that fund the rest of the year, a little bit of sidewalk and ADA activity. But other than that, they're just about, just about done there. Washington Park, our revenues and expenditures are just right neck and neck with each other, which is great because we've had so many refunds out of the Washington Park Fund. They have really done a nice job of holding their expenditures down. They didn't hire many, not nearly as many seasonal staff as they normally do during the year. That's helped a lot to keep that activity down, that expenditure activity down. But, you know, you can just, you can kind of roll through and see, everything looks pretty reasonable. We talked about lodging tax, that's, you know, way down for obvious reasons. The expenditures are going to be down as well. Those, a lot of those programs that the lodging tax funds are not going to take place. So both revenues and expenditures will be down this year. The water funds, the three of these utilities, the water sewer and storm grain, we collect general facilities charges as part of the revenue structure. So those, those revenues are included in this total revenue number here. On the side here, I break out the charges and the capital collection just so you can see how our collection is doing versus what we had estimated, both in charges for service, which is based on consumption, and capital, which is the GFCs that are generated from new home construction. So there's really nothing unusual there. You know, a couple of revenue streams are down that we had anticipated. Other than that, it, it seems to be reasonable and normal. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about any of that.
Mayor here.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Hogland, for the, for those numbers. A question I have is about sales tax because it's always one of your hardest things to, to get the crystal ball, especially when we start, first went into COVID. I think we were, you were predicting 75% decrease for the month of March, April and May. And if I added those up correctly, I think we're, it's about 55. But I guess the one question I have is, the challenge of the crystal ball is the delays on remittance to the Department of Revenue. I don't, I don't have good visibility on that. Is there anything that's missing from March, April and May from Department of Revenue at this point?
Yeah, that's a good question. And that's something we've been trying to nail down as well. We haven't got a lot of detailed information from them. I've reached out directly to our contact, the DOR, and asked about that, if there are deferrals that aren't included or, you know, just.
The good news is there'll be more, there would be more revenue coming in, correct? It's not, they're not gonna, you're not gonna have to pay anything back, correct?
Yeah, right.
So, so, so if, if the math is correct, maybe 55 to 60%. And again, I, I like your pessimistic crystal ball, you know, 75%. But do you think there, there needs to be any adjustment to the 50% prediction for June, July and August receipts?
Yeah, so at this, at this point, it's, yeah, it's a great question. And those are exactly the, the things that the mayor and I have been talking about. I, I suspect, and I have this in my, one of my slides for a little bit later, but with the expanded COVID benefits and with, you know, the, the stimulus checks that went out, I, I suspect that perhaps that's buoyed our sales tax more than it would have otherwise. So at, at this point, I, I'm just kind of waiting to see if, so I'm not anticipating coming back to council with, you know, an, an adjustment to, to reduce those, those estimates. I think the, the measures that we've taken on the expenditure side, we were pretty proactive about that and, and continuing to monitor our, our spending. And I think we're doing a good job of that. So I don't think we'll need to come back officially to do a reduction in sales tax estimates. And yeah, so we're, we're really, really waiting to see on a lot of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So if there's no other questions about the June month end, we can jump into the next budget discussion, if you like, Mayor.
Yes, we'll move to item four B, where we discuss the 2021 budget planning process. Mr. Hogland.
So I, I put a few slides together outlining, trying to outline what our 2021 budget expectations are. And as, I'm sure as, as you're experiencing when you're thinking about next year and what our budget should look like, running into a lot of questions. And so we've been, we've been spending a lot of time trying to figure out what that next year's budget is going to look like. So just to begin with, we're currently operating the city bandicortis on a biennial budget, which is a two-year budget. Biennial budgets run from a, it's out, the, the timing is outlined in state law. So it's run, it runs from an odd year through an even year. So you can't start a biennial budget at any point. You need to start in an odd year and run through an even year. So this is the second year of our current biennial budget. It's an easy matter to switch back to an annual budget. You, as council, would just need to adopt an ordinance revoking the biennial budget ordinance before year end. And then at year end, we would just go back into an annual budget and, and that would be adopted by ordinance, just, just like, just like always. But there are many unknowns at this time, obviously, and it makes projecting a year out daunting, to say the least. And trying to think two years out is really essentially impossible for me, at least to get my, my head around. So what we have been talking about is reverting back to an annual budget for the next two years. So that's the, kind of the biggest question I have for council tonight is if council has any objections to that. We've been talking about it internally with mayor. I've talked to finance committee about it, but I wanted to bring that question to both council tonight. So envisioning 2021, so based on current events and the large number of unknowns, it may make sense to retain some of the budget restrictions that were put in place by resolution in 2082, where possible. And maybe the most obvious one is the hiring freeze. You were just talking about this earlier tonight. And obviously, there are times when that, that hiring freeze isn't possible. But, but what the hiring freeze does is it makes you assess and question every hiring decision. When somebody leaves, you don't just automatically file a, an advertisement to refill that position. And then we, there's also a freeze on mandatory or non-mandatory equipment. And I would, I think that's wise in, in this environment that we're in now that we continue to scrutinize every equipment purchase. And then just continuing to exercise general purchasing restraint, which we are, I think, if you, if you look through the voucher list every Monday, you'll see that most of those purchases are oriented around either, around one of our utilities or, or public safety. There's not a lot of extra purchasing taking place at this time. Additional budget expectations for next year, thinking about revenue projections, and I mentioned this just a minute ago, thinking about the upcoming loss of expanded COVID benefits. And I, from what I understand, I, it looks like the, the feds will be initiating another stimulus type of package. And that would certainly help our, our sales tax. But there's, there's things, there's things taking place. I'm, I'm comparing what we're going through right now compared to the last recession that we went through in 2008, nine timeframe. I mean, that's, that's the only thing I was, you know, I was the new finance director at that time, but I went through that and that's all I have to compare it to. And things are so different now. And I feel like there's something, I feel like more is coming. And one of the things that I was looking at is unemployment. I, I look back at peak unemployment during the last recession and in October 2010, I believe is when it peaked. That's what I could find in my internet search at least. And, and the unemployment peaked at 10%. And for the following year, our sales tax was down 25% for the entire year, 2009 compared to 2008. At June end, June month end 2020, according to BLS Bureau of Labor Statistics, unemployment rate was at 11.1%. And we looked at our sales tax, how it was down 20, 25% in May, June. It's only down 10% in July. It looks like it's coming back up. And I guess I just don't trust that that's going to continue to be the case when the unemployment rate is still relatively high. Some of our expenditure bucket, expenditure projections for, for 2021, thinking about what those expenditures are going to look like. I think it may be prudent to retain some of the expenditure reductions that we looked at in the budget amendments that council passed last, last month. And one of the most significant areas was in the overlay program, a temporary reduction in addition to some of those attrition reductions that we gained in other departments, allowed us to funnel resources back to the general fund. So it was something like, I think it was around 800 or 900,000 in property tax that we rebudgeted from, from governmental funds back to the general fund, to fund those basic services that are, that are run out of the general fund. I think there will be some exceptions to that as we go through the budgeting process. There may be some departments that have been overextended during the current timeframe that may need to be revisited in the upcoming budget. But generally, that makes sense to me to leave those reallocated resources in the general fund. And then my last slide here, kind of talking about 2021. Back in 2016, some of our council members will remember, we had a, a meeting where we talked about the budget process overall, about the budget on a broad basis. And we came up, we as a, you know, council and staff came up with seven broad budget goals that all of our expenditures from that point for the next couple of budgets are oriented around. And that's, those seven items are outlined here. Community enrichment, public safety, economic development, essential services, natural resource sustainability, social services and responsible government. So I wanted to put those, we still, I still use those in budget documents that I've prepared over the last few years. But I wanted to kind of put that back on the front burner with council, see if these were still items that, that made sense that we should be oriented, orienting all of our, our spending around. So my, my goal for tonight was to get council thinking about the budget. And I was hoping that this would serve as kind of a prompt to a, a larger conversation about the 2021 budget, what council's expectations were. So happy to answer any, any questions that anybody might have.
Mayor here.
Mr. Young.
Well, it's really more of a comment at this point, still absorbing what you've presented before. But what I really do appreciate is your continued use of conservative numbers. I agree with you, quite honestly. We're not sure what will end up happening. And I would, as my mother always said, err on the side of caution. And so I really appreciate that and, and your bringing that forward for us. So I, I think that we should continue along the course that you're doing, Steve, in being conservative in our approach. If we end up with a greater windfall than we were anticipating, then wonderful. We'll know what to do with it because I'm sure there'll be items that we need to have addressed and that's been long in the queue. So thank you very much. and that's been long in the queue. So thank you very much.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I certainly support going back to an annual budget as much as I did support the biennial budget. But considering the conversation I just had with our finance director about trying to, trying to predict three months in advance, asking him to go out, you know, two years is, is a little unfair and unrealistic. So certainly I support moving, moving to that, that timeframe.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
I also concur that we should move to the annual budget. The two-year budget is a good concept, but it never really worked out due to our software limitations, among other things, plus the condition we're in now. I certainly don't hear anyone advocating for the two-year budget.
No.
No. So, okay, so maybe that's decided. I think the broad budget goals are nice, but they're supposed to really be the beginning of a process, not the end. They don't really convey any instruction as to how to construct the budget. You know, one of them's public safety. So, yes, I mean, we should have that. How much should we have versus all the other goals? None of that is really conveyed. So I don't, I don't think that they provide by themselves any, almost anything useful. I would urge the mayor to bring us a budget proposal that memorializes the hiring freeze and the numbers that are in her budget proposal, calls out any necessary exceptions so that we can individually consider those, also continues the equipment freeze, and it's just a very conservative budget. And then let's see what money is left over. It, it does seem like our revenue projections are, are not that bad. But a whole bunch of people are about to fall off a fiscal cliff unless Congress acts to extend unemployment benefits, and we don't know where that is. One of the things we talked about in the finance committee is maybe pushing the budget process as late in the year as we can. Because we will have more information later in the year about what the next year's going to look like. So maybe when we construct a calendar for this whole thing, we should do it with that in mind. I, I, I would really, generally, when we get a budget proposal, it does not clearly delineate what a status quo budget is versus the additions and deletions from the prior years. And I really think that the budget proposal should just be status quo with hiring freeze and equipment freeze and those types of conservative assumptions. And if we end up with extra money, let's, let's save it up for the year following. With one exception to that, and that is, if we have buildings that are going to become damaged because their roofs are caving in, or other systems like that, you know, where we are going to lose assets because we're not maintaining them, I think we need to go after that. You know, any extra money that we find in the budget should be spent on those kinds of things, preserving our assets. And I would extend that as well to roads. If we fall behind on roads further, we've seen the charts over and over that Public Works presents their favorite charts, that if you get too far behind, the roads start degrading much faster. So, so those, I think that spending money on those things is the fiscally conservative position. So I would want to maintain funding on those things as much as we can.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Other thoughts? Well, I think we have our marching orders, Mr. Hoagland, and we'll get to work. And we hear you. We're going to do a good job with this. We'll be fiscally conservative, we'll take care of our community, and we're going to navigate COVID. Okay, all right. So is, any of them from the public call in, are we listening on this one, Marsha?
Mr. Kaufman, do you have anyone on the line?
I do not have anyone who has called in.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, unless there's other things to say, we'll move on then to item 4C, which is also a public comment. It's Resolution 2096, extending a duration of Resolution 2082, providing temporary procedures to respond to COVID-19 epidemic. This is a discussion item of possible action. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so Resolution 2096, did it pop up there? Can you see that now?
No.
So Resolution 2096 extends the term of Resolution 2082, which was adopted to provide temporary procedures to respond to the COVID-19 epidemic. This is what we discussed last week. This is the resolution that would extend the terms of that resolution through September 30th of 2020, or earlier if rescinded by a future city council resolution. The exception to that is in Resolution 2082, suspended public hearings. So that exception expires July 31st, 2020. The rest of them would be in, in effect through September 30th, 2020, unless earlier rescinded by council. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or entertain a motion, perhaps.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. McDougal.
Just wanted to confirm, there was an email that went out this afternoon from, I think it was from Matt or Marsha, saying that we're, we're getting set up to be able to host a Zoom meeting where city council will be panelists and be able to speak freely, whereas audience can essentially raise their hands sort of electronically and then be called upon to speak. Is that, is that set for next week? Is that the plan?
That is set for August 10th.
August 10th, okay.
Yeah, there, there is a few things in the queue to get done, and then we'll be set to do that.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I think this resolution addresses everything we talked about last week, specifically the public hearings. And I appreciate Mr. McDougal bringing up the fact that we might have a better way to do that. And so I move that we approve Resolution 2096. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young, to approve Resolution 2096. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yeah.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So is there anything for the good of the order? At this time, I will adjourn the July 27th, 2020 meeting. Enjoy your evening. Thank you for being here. Bye-bye.